Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, January 15th, 2020 meeting of the Lake Havasu Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Jim Harris.
Here.
Lucas Dale. Michael Gordon. Doug Hardy.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Danny White.
Is that it? Since we have two vacancies, would Ms. Ballard please come and join us today? Okay, minutes from the last meeting, are there any additions, corrections, deletions, anything pertaining to the minutes of the last meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Need a second.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGowan to approve, a second by Mr. Hardy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes, yes, sir.
Okay. Moving along, correspondence and announcements, Mr. Morris.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Welcome to 2020, our first planning and zoning commission meeting, and the month's half over already, I tell you. I do have one other announcement. Kevin Murphy, an alternate member, he resigned from his seat from the commission, he has other, I think he's moving on to other opportunities. So there is a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate. If anyone's interested in applying for that vacancy, they can contact the city clerk's office for an application packet. With that, that concludes my, of course, my announcements. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let me start by saying that this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item, there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that any one of the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing portion of the meeting, bring the motion back to the table for the city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. The first item on today's agenda is ID 20-2253. It is a request for approval of a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for toy storage at the Foothills Storage Condominiums. Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This request is for, as you said, storage condominiums up in Cherry, on Cherry Tree Boulevard. The property is here, it's about five and a half acres, it's located on Cherry Tree Boulevard, on the intersection of Cherry Tree Boulevard and the major street across, cross street up there. The properties to the north and west and south are zoned RE residential estates, and the properties to the north are zoned mixed-use general, as is the subject property is zoned mixed-use general. The storage units are allowed in that zoning district. So the preliminary plat, as shown here, is for the entire, there's the entire property in its, proposed as two phases. Phase one is the bottom portion here at this point. They're proposing in building A to have 12, excuse me, 25 storage units and one utility unit, and then in building B to have 21 storage units. The balance of parcel A is going to be for easement for ingress, egress, utilities, drainage, that sort of thing. They show parcel B is a future phase, we have no, nothing submitted to us at this point for that future phase of parcel B. The condominium parcel plat provides an opportunity for the owners to sell the individual units, and this project has gone through a design review and building permits, they've been reviewed and approved. So with that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, questions of staff by Commissioners? I have one. Included in this proposal, is there a unit for management residence or anything like that?
Nothing shown on this plat, no.
Okay. Nobody else has any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. Luke described the project as good as it could be described. Currently, the project is under construction, the units are being built, and this plat just allows them to sell the individual units to associated homeowners up in that area. And to answer your question, Jim, right now there is not a management unit inside phase one.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah. So if there's any other questions of commission, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, I will now open this up to the public. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con, now is the time to come to the microphone. Anybody at all? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff finds the proposed subdivision meets all the requirements set forth in Title 13. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action ID 20-2253, a preliminary condominium subdivision plat for toy storage at the Foothills Storage Condominiums. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Nelson.
I'll make a motion to approve ID 20-2253 with staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Hardy to approve ID 20-2253 with staff's recommendations. Any discussion on the issue? Hearing none, let's go back to our voting screen and vote. Second item on today's agenda is ID 20-2254. This is a request for approval of a preliminary townhome condominium subdivision plat for Mastro's condominiums, creating 10 residential units. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you again. This property is about .6 acres, it's located on Palo Verde Boulevard, south, right across from where Rainbow Avenue North comes into Palo Verde, this property here. The complex will have one access off of Palo Verde Boulevard. The property is bounded by multiple-family residential to the west, and then the south and the east has single-family residential development. The R3 zoning district allows multiple-family projects, such as the one proposed in the Here's the proposed layout of the condominiums. They're proposed as townhomes, that is, the property, they would own the land underneath the property as well as the building itself. There are 10 units proposed here. The project was submitted and approved through the design review and building permit processes. So with that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of staff by the commission? Okay, hearing none, is the applicant present? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Lee Johnson, APL Surveying again. The only thing that staff did not say on this one is, this is an R3 zone, which is a single-height zone, so these are a single-story unit. So I just wanted to make that clear for you guys on that. But if there's any other questions, be happy to answer them.
Any questions of the applicant by staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you, guys.
All right, again, this is a public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item, either in favor or against, now is the time to do so. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff finds the proposed subdivision meets all the requirements set forth in Title 13. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 20-2254, a preliminary townhome condominium subdivision plat for Mastro's condominiums. Thank you.
All right, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Bergen?
I just have one question of staff. On this particular one, what was done to let the neighbors know what was going on? There, there's some R1 adjacent to it, and there's no sign on the property, and I don't know how the neighbors even knew what was going on here.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Bergen. In the development process for a project like a subdivision, or even construction of the project itself, physical construction of the buildings, there's not a requirement for notification of the property owners around it, as there would be like for a case of a rezone. If they're rezoning the property, there'd be notification requirements. If there was a conditional use permit, there'd be notification requirements. But in the case of a subdivision, it's just changing how the property, how ownership of portions of the property are divvied up, if you will. There's no requirement for notification of property owners for a subdivision process like this. Again, if it was a rezone or a conditional use permit, it would, and if it was building construction, there's no requirement for, once a building's under construction or to be constructed, there's no requirement for notification of the property owners. So that would be above and beyond, it's something that's not required, and it's something typically we do not do, because it's not a requirement for the state law or the city ordinances.
In essence, we're not changing the zoning, we're just approving how they're going to sell the, or divvy up the parcel, so to speak.
That's correct, yes.
So it doesn't even require the applicant to send letters out or anything?
No, does that requirement, that's not a requirement, correct.
Okay. It's within what you can build.
Mr. Nelson.
It's within what you can build on the property. It's basically the same thing we did with the storage units. We're approving the plat so they can sell these as individual parcel numbers.
Any other questions or discussion? We are at the table for a motion and/or discussion still. Anybody? Mr. McGowan.
I make a motion to approve ID 20-2254, a request for approval of preliminary townhouse condominium sub-plus for master condominiums created in residential times. Put my glasses on.
Yeah, that might help.
Think it would be better. And whole attachments included.
All right, we have a motion to approve ID 20-2254, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Nelson. All right, we have a motion to approve ID 20-2254 by Mr. McGowan, seconded by Mr. Nelson. Any further discussion by Commissioners? Okay, let's go ahead and place our votes. All right, the next item on today's agenda, item number ID 20-2248. This is a request to amend planned development number 97-005 by removing retail center-2 parcel plat, parcels A, B, and C from the existing planned development, and rezoning the properties from C2-PD, excuse me, C2PD, general commercial planned development, to C2 general commercial. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This property is located near the shops at Lake Havasu in the north end of town. Their property is outlined here in yellow. They're bounded on the east by the existing Home Depot, and then to the north and west, north and east also by Retail Center Boulevard. To the west and to the south, there's the city limits, which is, the red dashed line is the city limits, so that's county land to the west and to the south. There's an existing RV park down here at the southwest corner, and there's also a sewer, excuse me, a city sewer lift station, and then a utility, electrical utility substation in that area, northwest, southwest corner of the property. There's also a wash that runs through there. I'm going to go to the parcel plat map. This is a strangely named parcel plat for retail center-2. It has consisted of these three parcels, which are the subject parcels. In this, on these properties, there are a number of easements that run along the borders, the boundaries of the properties, as well as the wash that goes through the property. The property owner will have to take those in consideration when they're developing Overall, the planned development for the mall overall was amended in 1997, it rezoned the entire mall property to C2 planned development, and approved a general development plan. The only thing that was really fleshed out in that general development plan was the mall we know right now, with the buildings that are there, located there now. These vacant lots were not, there was no specific development plan layout for those lots. So at that time, anything to be developed here would have to come through and be, have design review by the Planning Commission and/or City Council under the old system. In this case, we say to avoid going through that, the applicant has chose to remove themselves from the planned development, and I'll go through the next slide, it shows the zoning. So this, again, the subject properties are here in yellow. You've seen a number of other requests to be removed from this planned development. These properties here along Retail Center Boulevard have been removed to straight-up C2, and then recently, a portion of the mall itself was rezoned from the planned development to straight-up C2. So if this request is approved, and this is rezoned to C2, the property would be allowed to develop with any uses allowed in the C2 zoning district with design review by staff. With that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
So just to recap, what they're doing is they are removing themselves from the planned development so that they can develop on their own what they choose within the C2 zoning allowances?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Any questions of staff from commission? Mr. Nelson?
My only question is, is it, right now it's limited to retail, or whatever they choose to propose has to be agreed upon by everybody at the mall?
Well, I don't know if this part, I think I, one too many on. All right, thank you. I'm not sure how this plays into the mall overall, what permissions they would need from the mall. If it's part of a private development agreement between the mall properties, that's something outside the city's purview typically. Right now, if they were to develop, they could, they could apply for anything that's allowed in the C2 zoning district, the underlying zoning district, but because it has that planned development on the end of it, stuck on the end of the zoning district, that says, hey, this is something that may need to have more scrutiny to it, so we're, under the old development plan, it would have to go to Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the City Council for a review of what they want to do, because it wasn't specifically laid out back in 1997 when the mall was developing overall, was beginning to be developed. So it's a little, PDs, as they sit on the shelf for a long time and don't get developed, what was good at that time changes over time, and in this case, there was no plan for that area, so they're asking, well, can we just get rid of the, whatever, the extra level of scrutiny and design review, not design review, but extra level of review, and just go make it like a normal C2 property and remove it from that planned development?
Just go it on their own?
Right.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant present? I do not see an applicant. You are the applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, staff, good morning, commission. My name's Chris Stark. I'm the owner, applicant. The property, we're planning on doing like a toy storage, RV, elite custom condominium storage on the, on the said property. It's going to have a landscape around the whole perimeter, nice facade to match the surrounding properties. This is kind of currently what we do right now, so we're fully aware of how, you know, the amenities work in offering some good stuff to the citizens of Havasu, so. If you guys have any questions, I can help you answer them.
Any questions of the applicant? Just real quick, what's your projected timeframe for construction?
Less than two years, 18 months to years.
All right. All right, hearing none, thank you, appreciate it. All right, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up to the public again. Anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con? Now is the time. I see nobody, so we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff finds the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in Section 140504L. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends that Planning Commission recommend approval to amend the planned development number 97-005 by removing retail center-2 parcel plat, parcels A, B, and C from the existing planned development, and rezoning the properties from C2PD, general commercial planned development, to C2 general commissioner, general commercial. And as a reminder, this, if, the commission's recommendation will go to the City Council at their meeting on February 25th. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of staff by Commissioners? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Ms. Ballard?
I make a motion for, to approve ID 20-2248, a request to amend planned development number 97-005 by removing retail center-2 parcel plat, parcels A, B, and C from the existing planned development, and rezoning the properties from C2PD, general commercial planned development, to C2 general commercial.
I second the motion.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Ballard, seconded by, Mr. Nelson was first at it, to approve ID 20-2248 with staff recommendations.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I make one suggestion, change?
Yes.
It needs to be a recommended approval, because you're recommending approval to the City Council and not necessarily approving the item at this level. So if you don't mind amending the motion to just, you don't have to say the whole thing over, but if you can amend it to just say to recommend approval, I would appreciate it.
Does the maker of the motion agree to recommend to approval?
Yeah, I recommend just approval.
Mr.?
I second the recommendation.
Okay, we have a amended motion made by Ms. Ballard and seconded by Mr. Nelson to recommend approval to the City Council for item number 20-2248. Any further discussion by Commissioners? Okay, let's call for the question. The next item on today's agenda, ID 20-2251, this is a request for a minor general plan amendment, changing the future land use map designation from resort-related to resort-related island. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This application is for a minor general plan amendment. It's also accompanied by a request for a zoning change for the same properties. Now, when we get into this discussion, we're going to, because the way general plan designations and zoning designations are so interrelated with each other, we're going to end up talking about both of those sorts of uses, the general plan and the planned, and the rezone, but we're going to have to, of course, the commission will have to make separate motions on each item.
Would you like me to introduce a second item as well that pertains to this?
Would that be okay with the city attorney? Is that all right?
Yes, and if you think that'll be less confusing, yes, that would be fine.
All right, let's go, let's go back a step.
Mr. Chairman, very quickly, my name's Louis Lopez, and I'm an attorney with Fenmore Craig and Phoenix. I did want to defer on both this issue and the other issue that's being combined. I just want to make sure for purposes of record, are you combining that or not, in any way waiving our objection to this particular issue, or just putting it on the record?
We are, we are here to hear.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, sir, because you're not, you didn't speak into the mic, so although we heard you, it didn't pick up probably.
Please come back to the microphone.
So if you don't mind stepping to the mic, I'm really sorry.
Not a problem.
But if you don't, then everything that you just said, if we don't repeat it into the mic, didn't actually get on the record.
No one, no one has ever accused me of not being loud enough. My name is Louis Lopez, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fenmore Craig. I'm representing the Shoreline Homeowners Association. We wanted to be heard on this particular issue, but I understand the board is combining this issue with the other matter. Just wanted to preserve our objection, make sure that we're going to have the opportunity to speak as to both issues on the combined.
For clarification, we're not going to combine them, we're going to announce them together, we will vote on them separately.
Thank you.
We will, we will hear them separately, so to speak.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Having said that, we are going to read both of these into the record, but we will, we will, they're going to overlap in discussions, we are going to vote on them separately. So the first one, I'll recap, is ID 20-2251, it's a request for a minor general plan amendment, changing the future land use map designation from resort-related to resort-related island. Coincidental to that, we have ID 20-2250, this is a request to amend the general, excuse me, the Grand Island Estates planned development by rezoning parcels A and C, Lot 1, from mixed-use neighborhood PD to mixed-use general, removing said parcels from the planned development. So there's going to be a little overlap on discussions here, but we will vote on ID 2251 first, and then follow up with 2250 separately.
Mr. Chair, can I also make one more suggestion?
You certainly may, Ms. Gary.
I mean, although we're going to combine them for the purposes of giving the report, if you could still conduct them, have a public hearing, open it on the first item, take that, make your, make your motion at that point, and then come back to that second item, have a public hearing on that, and make that second motion, just so there's two separate.
That's what I was planning to do.
Perfect, we're great then.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Morris, your presentation for the first one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, thank you. Okay, so this property is located on the western end of the island. So here they are, the two properties together. They're currently vacant and undeveloped. Now, as I alluded to before, here they are, vacant, undeveloped properties. The general plan and designation and zoning designations, they're different animals, but they are so closely related, this might be a good time to go over those differences. The general plan, as the name implies, has general classifications for different areas of the city, based on the, generally the types of uses. So let's say we have a general plan designation that's called commercial. Okay, that's good, so commercial is what generally this area is going to be laid out for uses of general, of commercial-type. So commercial is what generally this area is gonna be laid out for uses of general, of commercial type uses. So that's the general plan designation. Then the layer under that is the zoning designation. So that's a separate, more detailed layer. So this, in that case, let's say a general plan was zone, was commercial designation. That means there could be zoning designations under that that are like C one, limited commercial, C two, general commercial, and other general, other commercial type uses. In this case, under the, the current designation of these properties, they're designated resort related, which is this kind of, I'm not sure what that mauve color. So here are the subject properties, and this color is resort related. So these are resort related. They're asking to go from resort related general plan designation to resort related island, which is this deep purple color. So what are the differences between those two zoning, those two general plan designations? In this case, the current resort related designation is primary uses are service, commercial, retail, such as uses such as boat, sales, rentals, repairs, hotels, motels, restaurants, things like that. So the resort related is generally a commercial type designation. So there could be commercial zoning designations under, or categories under that. They're proposing to go to resort related island. So that is primarily medium to high density resort uses, residential uses like condominiums, townhomes, patio homes, things like that. Also includes hotels, time shares. And also could include some commercial services, commercial retail and, and general services. So that is a kind of a combination of, of high density, higher density residential and commercial uses that may be allowed under that resort related island. So they're asking, that, that's the, the first layer, and this is where it kind of gets convoluted. The first layer, they're asking to go from the general plan of resort related to resort related island. And along with that, the companion piece, we'll be talking about in detail also, they're asking to go from the current plan development to something that's allowed to a zoning designation that is mixed use general, which is allowed under that resort related island district. So here are the subject properties. These two properties together are eleven and a half acres of the hundred and six acre total development, originally known and approved as the villages on the island in nineteen ninety four. That project was last amended in two thousand and five, and the name was changed to Grand Island Estates. It's has this designation. The original development consisted of a number of parcels. Parcel A, which is one of the subject parcels, was, was designated as a commerce, some sort of commercial use. Parcel C was one piece that got subsequently split into two pieces. Lot one of parcel C is part of the subject request, and it was set up as resort. The other parcel C, what portion of parcel C was also resort. Parcel B was set up as detached casitas that were affiliated with the hotel resort. And then D, E, F, H, and I were all set up as single family residential type uses. And then parcel G is park property. So this is the, the way it was laid out and approved in two thousand and five. Here's another view that maybe shows more of the detail of how they proposed a layout of the streets generally. These are the residential areas, the park. This is again, is the subject properties where there is showing a generally a commercial aspect here. Resort spanning both sides of C. Subsequently, the C was split into two, so half of the C goes to one part, and then the other half of C goes to the resort, and then the B casitas areas. Now, as far as building heights in these areas, the resort was approved at seventy feet for the hotel resort, and the balance of the properties were all approved at thirty feet in height. Also, an agreement from nineteen ninety six allowed up to four hundred residential units. At this point, there, there are currently three hundred and fifty residential units available. I mean, lots available on this property, on this project overall. Now, the commercial hotel unit element of the Grand Island Estates includes, again, these parcels, A, C, and B. Again, parcel C was divided into two. Parcel A, B, and a portion of C one. So A, B, and this portion, the two parcels in question here, plus B are all owned by this property owner. The second half of parcel C is owned by somebody else. The owner, at this point, has indicated they don't want to develop the parcels based on the restrictions, based setup on this parcel, on this plan development. And they're asking to be rezoned. And the first step, of course, is to change the zoning, the general plan to make sure that proposed zoning is allowed under the new general plan designation. The owner has not provided any specific development plans to staff at this point. And with that, concludes my presentation. Open any questions? Thank you.
All right, are there, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Mr. Nelson looks like.
I have a few questions. Number one, you know, does the applicant know that if, if this were to pass, that they could only build fifty units?
That's, I guess, a good question for the applicant. I don't know what the applicant is aware of at this point. He hasn't presented anything, any specific development plans to the city, to the planning department. We haven't seen anything, so we don't really know exactly what he's proposing.
That, the development agreement that you are referring to.
Chad, I'm sorry, I'm, Commissioner, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. One, as far as talking about the number of units, that has to do with the development agreement, and there are specific parts now of that development where the development agreement is no longer applicable. So I don't know, one, that your statement is accurate, and so I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
And what elements would that be? What parcels would that be?
Well, now, when, so, under the development agreement, there are certain points that, once they've been achieved, the development agreement is no longer applicable. So one, it's fully developed to the final person, then the development agreement is no longer applicable to that lot. Two, there is a certain element of time. So if something wasn't developed within a certain amount of time from the time of the development agreement, at a certain point in time, the development agreement no longer exists as to that part of the development or that, that, that area.
So which of those have we exceeded?
Well, and I think this item came to you guys a while ago where we filed the notice of the development agreement no longer applicable to the areas that we're speaking of.
I didn't receive anything.
I don't recall that either.
Well, I mean, it came before the commission, Stewart. That came before the commission, correct? Or the council? I'll go.
Please come to the record and state your name for the. Mr. Schmeling.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stuart Schmeling, Development Service Director and Zoning Administrator. I believe that development agreement went to the city council. I don't believe it had to come to the planning commission. I can't recall what date specifically.
So are we saying that that development agreement no longer pertains to all of these parcels?
No, not all of them, just those that are in, owned by the final owner. Is that correct terminology?
Yes, that's one of the elements. So the ones that, once they're finally development, finally developed or to that final owner, then the development agreement no longer applies. So a lot is sold to the homeowner, the homeowner is the final owner of that property, the development agreement no longer applies. So all of the areas that have been developed with homes on them, for the most part, unless they're not spec built by developer with several lots, then those are final, the development agreement no longer applies to those areas.
So are you, are you labeling it as ownership or development?
It is, the way that the development agreement defines it is to the final owner. So I guess when I, when I'm talking about, so yes, lot, the lot to the final owner.
So if somebody purchased, I'm just hypothetical here. So if somebody has purchased a lot in the development, then the development agreement no longer pertains to them?
They're no longer subject to the restrictions within the original development agreement, correct?
So we're just talking about the development agreement. Don't confuse that with the plan development.
Or the HOA or anything else. There's other restrictions.
Just the development agreement. So what's contained in the development agreement is what I believe Commissioner Chad Nelson is replying or referring to when he's talking about the number of residential units. That's contained in the development agreement.
So is that, is that number now null and void?
It would, it doesn't apply to those lots that are no longer a part of the development agreement. If that was a condition of the development agreement, and that development agreement no longer applies to those, they're not a part of that restriction.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Nelson?
It's adverse to my experience on the island.
Mine too.
However, the next thing I was gonna tell Luke is, is I don't think the packages, the package to the commissioners was complete without knowledge of any of this. I don't think that we have, I don't think we have any business making a decision on this right now. That's my opinion.
Any other questions of staff by commissioners? All right, let's open it up to the, to the applicant. Is the applicant here today? Would you like to come forward and make a presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Jim Roll. I currently own this since the island went through bankruptcy in eleven. Predominantly, as you look at the map up there, D, E, F, H, and I were all subject to very specific, the way they developed it. Consequently, most all the owners here have all got to change and not build duplexes, not build patio homes, and turn them all into single family houses, which was great, glad things turned out well. And where I'm at with the rest of the island is it's resort related to the island, and all I'm basically trying to do is change the pieces I have to coexist with exactly what's already been changed on the island. And I, I think the original agreement was back in eighty nine, and it has since expired. And it, there was verbiage in there that after X amount of time, and there was no development, it would cease to exist. Now, it's not that anybody can do anything. That's where I'm going in with the city of just trying to blend in, and whether it's, you know, presently of, of doing condominiums. But again, they would not be for sale, they would be rentable. And again, I'd be in the side of renting them to fifty and above. And they would be definitely upscale. And so not looking for any problems either. I do extensively, do a lot of commercial work in the upper states, in the Midwest, and my original is, is my mom and dad were down here in the seventies when you guys were all developing this stuff. And at that time, they came down in that little plane that the good, the good man was flying around, bringing people down here and trying to get them to invest in your town. And at that time, my mom and dad chose to, uh, it was too big, too much going on, and, but that's where I finally got a tip that this place was for sale, and we were fortunate to buy it. Unfortunately, oh, seven, oh, eight came and pretty much wiped out everybody that was any, any product that was out there. And so as all the different lots have now filled up and bankruptcy and everything else that's happened, they're all back, and it's wonderful. The, the houses have turned out really nice. And I'm not looking to do anything that's not already being done now. No special codes, no special heights. I am trying to get rid of the resort side, so nothing out there is gonna exceed what's going on now at thirty feet. And the reason I haven't put anything to the city is, is that first, I need to get the improvement by you guys so I can actually start. I have a lot of examples, but until I actually get success of, of talking to you guys, you being put something very tasteful, something that will fit on it very nicely. And people of just dying to be out here in the winter, I'm glad that I got to come here. It's zero at home, and it's beautiful here. And so I'm very hopeful that you guys see that it could be a very wonderful added fit to the island.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mr. Morris, the applicant indicates that there's no difference in height for the two different zoning districts. Is that correct? I was thinking that the original zoning district was twenty five feet.
All right, in the existing zoning district, which was mixed use neighborhood, the maximum building height is twenty five feet under the current code. The mixed use general, what he's proposing to go to is thirty feet in height.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, and I was referring to the rest of the neighborhood of, of everywhere around me is in that thirty, and that's all I'm looking to do as well.
Okay.
And, and not the hotel side of seventy feet.
Right.
Because that'd be a real issue for everybody as well.
Understandable.
And I'm not trying to do that either.
Are, are you through with your, you know, presentation?
Anybody has, if, if any of the commissioners have any questions?
And that's what I was gonna ask, are there any questions?
I do have a question of Mr. Morris and Mr. Roll. Is this, this is currently still in a P D? Is that correct or no?
Yes, it's currently part of the plan development for the island.
Okay, so.
And that plan development is roughly based on this plan here that's shown.
So when does the P D change take place?
Well, the second part of this two-part request, so we're talking, we're still talking about both of them mixed together, but this one, right now, we're talking about is for the general plan amendment. The rezone is to go from the mixed use neighborhood plan development, which is based on this, roughly based on this development plan here, the approved development plan. They're asking to be removed from that to go straight up to mixed use general with no development plan. So whatever's allowed in the mixed use general, now we're kind of jumping ahead a little bit to the rezoning, the next case, but the mixed use general without the plan development says, we, you can develop whatever's allowed in mixed use general, meeting the current development code, zoning building codes for that zoning district. So that's what they're asking to be removed from this development plan and rezone to mixed use general and allow them to develop whatever's allowed in the mixed use general zoning district.
Can you? Would you allow me to go over what, what would change there? And, and what, kind of what I'm getting at is it could be a little bit irresponsible for the commissioners to do something at this time, because we're, we would be taking a P D and just opening it up. For example, if you decided to sell that tomorrow, and we do this, it, the person who buys it could do all self-storage units.
Yeah, it's not my plan. I mean, I'm basically coming to you and saying, before I do anything, you are gonna have it in front of you.
I understand that, but without a, without a P D to look at, changing it from what it is now to, I mean, tomorrow, something could, and this, this happens quite a bit, just so you know.
Right.
Across this table, so it's not you that's doing this.
No, but I'm saying is the entire island, as I'm looking out there, all changed, and obviously you got, in your ballpark, of everybody that built the house got to do that. And so I'm pretty sure that every person that came to you guys wanted that change. They could have did something, but we're all holding hands here, hoping to make sure that it's, it's the right thing. They could've did something, but we're all holding hands here, hoping to make sure that it's, it's the right thing, and...
The point Mr. Nelson is trying to make is, whether it's you or somebody else, by changing this from the underlying zoning to the requested zoning, it opens up for whomever, anything that's allowed in that new zoning designation. So at this point, I'd like, maybe if Mr. Morris would enumerate some of those things that would be capable under this new zoning for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Here are the first two of, there's a total of three pages in our permitted uses table.
Excuse me. If, if you're done with your presentation, you can either stay there, or you can remain seated.
I've, I've been in the car for a while, so it's all good.
Not a problem. Glad to have you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, again, Commissioners, thank you. So here are the three pages of permitted uses, per the permitted uses table 3-1. I've highlighted the mixed-use general, this green column going up and down. The different designations, there's a, a letter P, that means that's a permitted use. There's a letter A, that means it may be allowed as an accessory use. There's a letter C, which means it could be allowed as a conditional use, which would typically be a special hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, this body. And then there's also temporary use, which would be a short-term type use. So if you see what's allowed in the different zoning, excuse me, in the different, in the mixed-use general, again, is, is shown in this column that's highlighted in light green.
Which is immediately adjacent to the current zoning of mixed-use neighborhood.
Good point.
Just point that out.
So you'll see, there's different, there's differences immediately available, I mean, evident here. If you look at residential uses, mixed-use neighborhood, I like to think of that as a neighborhood of homes that allows some commercial uses. And then there's the other designation, mixed-use general, which I like to think of as commercial that allows multiple-family, higher-density residential units. So if you go down the columns, you'll see the differences.
Mr. Nelson.
Interrupt you. And that's, that's one of my questions here, you know, both of the applicant and of planning and zoning, is you can see at the top there, the first three that it prohibits is single-family detached, uh, single-family attached, and two-family. It doesn't say, so basically duplex, it doesn't allow any of those things. So it, it's not really contiguous with what's going on out there. And then there's, I could probably save you some time. The other things that are permitted, that are not permitted in MUN, are clubs, lodges, private meeting halls, golf course, public safety facility, bar or nightclub, hotels, motels, conference facilities, which that was kind of confusing, because I thought that's what it was for in the first place. Resort, research, development, laboratory, self-storage, outdoor recreation, entertainment, theaters and auditorium, convenience store with fuel sales, general retail, adult retail, car wash, parking facility. So those are all the differences between the two that are permitted without a conditional use permit. So it doesn't really, the zoning doesn't really jive with what you want to do. Is, that was another one of my questions, it, it doesn't really, and that's why it could be really irresponsible for us to, to do this. And then, if for some reason you needed to sell it within, after we rezoned it, then anyone could do any of those uses. They could, they could put gas stations out there, car washes, and it's permitted within the new zoning, without doing anything.
Now, none of the which would be for sale. It would only be for lease. I plan on owning it all.
But you're not doing a P, a PD. What you should be doing is a, a change to the PD with, with, with all of your plans and everything that, because like I said, tomorrow...
That would lock it in.
Yeah, tomorrow you could sell it, even though I, we, we know that you don't intend to, but...
I've held it a long time.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm going anywhere.
And, and, and we're not, we're not trying to say that you're going to do anything adversely, but if something happened, and it switched hands, they could do that, it's, it's, it would all be permitted. So what really you should be doing is a, is a PD, a change to the PD, where it's locked in to what exactly is gonna be built, in my opinion.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? I see one coming forward. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is, as I said earlier, Louis Lopez. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Finnemore Craig. I was hired by the Shoreline Homeowners Association. I was asked to speak on behalf of the HOA, which involves the Siena Villas Estates, which is directly impacted by both the 2251 and the 2250 matter. I've also been asked to speak on behalf of individuals in the Montecito as part of the Grand Island Estate community as well, who could not be here just because they didn't have sufficient notice. I think Mr. Nelson hit the nail right on the head. This is premature at this particular point in time. I don't want to bleed the two issues together, but as the specific issue before them, if you make this amendment, while we respect what Mr. Roll is saying, there is no guarantees that all these other activities, which are clearly inconsistent with what's going on on the island, would be permissible. There's nothing that prohibits, prohibits him, prohibits him tomorrow to sell it to some thirty, third party, to put storage unit facilities on there, which would be opposite here. I can tell you, the members of the Shoreline Homeowners Association, they purchase homes based upon their understanding of the development as-is. They specifically understood that there was going to be potential commercial there, and they actually thought that that would be a benefit to the community having single-family homes there. They are adamantly opposed to any change that would allow these type of activities, or frankly, the activities that Mr. Roll wants to do, and I will explain that in greater detail with respect to 51, from moving forward. I will tell you, Greg Clark is here from Trinity Land Development. I'll allow him to speak when he believes it appropriate, but Mr. Clark purchased three of these lots, plus 184, excuse me, three of these parcels, plus 184 units from Mr. Roll, under the representation and warranty that the development was going to be limited to 400 residential units. And so now, by doing this first step, and then the second step, you are opening up a gateway where you have potential development above that 400 cap that was represented to Trinity Land Development, that was represented to the homeowners of Shoreline, homeowners association, in which they understood this was going to be a, a development that was limited to 400 residential developments. Respectfully, I'm unaware of any law or procedure that says the design development agreement somehow doesn't apply when each individual lot has been sold. That is contrary to my experience as well. Again, it's an issue we can get as the second issue, if you decide to move forward on this one. But for those reasons, we'd ask this board to not recommend the proposed amendment as part of 2251. And then on top of that, I would say, it'd probably render 2250 moot, because the only reason why we're here with respect to 2251 is Mr. Roll. And I, and I think that's very important, because there's no one else in the community standing here advocating for this change, except for Mr. Roll, who's trying to get this changed, so he can change his two lots, so that he can do something with them. Whether it ends up being sold, though he's represented, he's not planning to do that, whether or not he intends to put condo units, whether or not he tends to put storage units there, who knows? But if we say no with respect to 51, we do not need to go to 50, and I don't need to stand up here a second time. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, but that's all I have.
Any questions of the speaker from commission? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, either pro or con? Anybody at all? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
I'm Agnes Deason, and I...
Go ahead and pull your microphone down, please.
My name is Agnes Deason, and I live right on the main boulevard there. My, I, I know that it's, it's, it's not if, it's when there will be a building out there. My concern is that the island can't house that many more residents to... I believe I heard that there were football-sized field condominiums being built, two of them out there. The traffic out there is, is crazy as it is right now. I just can't imagine us putting two large condominium units out there. So thank you, and just thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? I'll give you a chance. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Charlie Harmon. I'm a homeowner in the Grand Island Estates Siena Villas, and I'm opposed to this matter before the, the commission today. Just a couple of things in, in background. Mr. Roll has presented, this is the second development that he has developed, or has proposed to the community for this property. The first one was, I'll, I'll say a year and a half ago, I don't have the exact time. We, all the homeowners got noticed, we went to the meeting, and when we got to the meeting, there was, again, no development, no plan, not even a napkin with a drawing of what was proposed for the property. And he wanted us to just be silent without any, without any information with which to support or reject what he wanted to do. And hence, got a negative reaction from the homeowners, because he had no plan. And it's like, what kind of developer comes to a, a meeting, which was required by the city, to have that meeting, and not present any kind of formal plan, even a napkin drawing, showing what he wants to do? Which led us to believe that he really had no intention of, of doing what he was talking about. And he had no, no talk about what to mitigate our concerns. She talked about the traffic, we, we talked about fire and police protection, all of that. All of that could be concerns, and what, what was he going to do to mitigate those? He had no answers for any of those. The project then hence just kind of fell apart. He then came the second time with another meeting. He did not properly document and send notices to the people that were required to by law. And hence, we all came to the meeting, and he said the meeting was canceled, because they didn't have proper notice. We were, at that point, we'd all stopped what we were doing to come to the meeting to find out information. Again, no plan, not even a napkin drawing of what he proposes out there. I contend that he has no plans to ever develop it, that he will, he will dupe the commission into approving this, and then sell it and make a big profit, since he bought it in bankruptcy. I hope that's not true. He says it's not, but there's no assertion that he's not. He's, he has not in good faith worked with anyone, especially the homeowners, in showing us what kind of plan he has, and how he's gonna mitigate our concerns, which I think are real. And if you, all you need to do is go on Saturday and Sunday at the bridge, and you'll see that there's a lot of traffic there, a lot of congestion, and if someone in their infinite wisdom decided that 400 homes was the right number there, without building that second bridge across, across the island, he's now proposing, in, we believe, that this would take the zone from what would be that 400 number to, what he's saying, multi-family would be delayed in this, which would take it way over that number, as far as the number of people, cars, infrastructure to handle on the island, and would blow it out of the water. We, I would recommend and, and hope that the commission would just table this and say there's information to make any kind of an agreement, and ask Mr. Roll to come back and do the process right by getting with the, the proper meetings with, and show us what he wants to do with the property, to show the council what he wants to do with the property, and to do this in a fair and open way, instead of what has been done so far. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Greg Clark from Trinity Land Development. I just wanted to dispute a few things, but instead, already. I originally purchased D and E, my company Trinity Land Development, in 2005 from Mr. Roll and his partner. They assured us that hotels were going in, they talked about, next to Site Six, putting a line-tram in. There are all these assurances they made that that was gonna be commercial. That's what everyone buying in our community, which several of them are here, that's what they all believe, that's what this map is. Luke, do you know if you could put the map up that shows the 400 housing units? I was broken up through all the parcels. No, there's a map. There's a map associated with the original villages on the island, that'd be the next page to this. This shows how the 400 lots were divided up between the five residential parcels.
This is the map we have at, at this point.
Okay, there is another map in existence that divides up parcels D, E, F, I, and H, that talks about how the 400 houses are divided up for each parcel. When Trinity bought D and E, we actually purchased 110 lots. When we purchased parcel I later from Mr. Roll directly, there's another 174 lots. There's approximately 75 in H, and approximately 155 in F. That's how you get to 400 housing units. Second thing Mr. Roll said is that this went through bankruptcy. I'm sorry, I've never gone through bankruptcy. D and E never went through bankruptcy. The other part he said is everyone's changed and done what they wanted to. Stu, you've been working with me, have I ever applied for change in parcel I, to change a different zoning?
Mr. Schmeling.
Stuart Schmeling, for the record. No, he has not submitted any requests. However, he has submitted requests, for several requests, for zoning administration interpretation of the regulations of different residential aspects within the development, but not for a change, a specific change.
Thank you.
So just to verify that, so everything that's been built out there has been built according to the original development agreement? So, sorry, I was asking, Stu, if everything that's been built out there, has anyone changed zoning or built anything that didn't, was not approved on the original plan development? Let's go D and E. D and E is single-family. Has there been any zoning change to parcels D and E, single-family?
The original intent of each aspect of the residential elements all had different setbacks and styles of buildings associated with them from the early 90s. We have made several zoning interpretations along the way to modify some of those setbacks that did not change the integrity of the overall development. So although it's a long-winded answer, the short answer is yes. Those have all been built within the, the specifications of the current plan development as assessed by the previous and current zoning administrator.
Yep, exactly, so it has not changed integrity of the overall development.
Correct.
Exactly. Thank you very much for your help. That's it. If you have any questions, I mean...
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, pro or con? Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Debbie Young. I am a homeowner in the Siena Villas Estates. And one thing, when this changed, changes to mixed-use general, and I might be inaccurate in this, but I was told by somebody in the planning department that this could possibly change it to where you could develop this at 40 units per acre. And if that's inaccurate, somebody please clear that up for me, because that would obviously increase the amount of homes on the island tremendously.
That is accurate.
So that's one thing that I think we need to take into consideration, is how many more homes does this possibly put on together?
It actually states 40 dwelling units per acre.
So that is extremely high-density housing. That is not consistent with what we have on the island right now. So, that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else that wishes to speak? Please come forward, state your name for the record. We have two of them.
My name is Mike Davis. I'm a homeowner on the island also. My concern with the high density is...
My name is Mike Davis. I'm a homeowner on the island also. Uh, my concern with the high density is uh fire life and safety. When it's a busy weekend out here, you cannot get across that bridge and lo and behold, someone has a heart attack or is in need of medical assistance. What's going to happen when those uh, those people can't get over there? Rental condominiums. I don't want rental condominiums. Mr. Roll says they're going to be high-end. High-end is in the eye of the beholder. You know what happens when you have rental condominiums and you have the, the crowd coming from California? What are we going to end up with the island? The island is not designed for that. And I, I do not want rental condos over there.
Thank you, sir.
That was one of the question.
Mr. Nelson.
One of the notes that I had for staff is at what point do you have to have fire?
We're speaking about general development.
How many, how many units? You know, in, within that area on the island before you have fire services?
I can't answer that question because I'm not purview to the fire code. However, what I will say is that in the event that this gets rezoned and something else is proposed, we will go through our traditional staff review, all the elements, which would include fire, police, uh input from engineering. In the event that there, it was determined that a traffic study, for example, was warranted um as part of that review, um, we would require the owner or the applicant to, to provide that um in order to, to justify or allow the development. Same holds true with the fire. In the event that they propose something, whether it's a seventy-foot hotel or whether it's multi-family, commercial, whatever, the fire department will have the opportunity to review any development and uh submit their concerns and obviously have them addressed.
Okay, we are still at the public hearing portion. There was one more gentleman that wanted to speak that I know of. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Wayland Gates. I'm a homeowner and landowner on the island. I think something that's being skipped over, missed here in a way is that currently there's a planned development that is more restrictive than the zoning of this property. So it's not really good for us to compare multi-use neighborhood compared to multi-use general because it currently is not multi-use neighborhood, it's a planned development. If it changes to multi-use general, it very much opens up the possibilities of what could be done there. As a real estate investor, a developer, I would always prefer to own land that has the least restriction possible because it increases the value of that land. It would seem to me that this would very much increase the value of that land and that would be a good reason to ask for such a general change without any specific plans that have been put forward.
I don't think we're missing that.
I, I just think it needs to be very clear for everybody that's looking at it that it's not just zoning. The planned development that's in place is a, a very restrictive set of guidelines for the island. And as an owner out there, I like that restriction because I know what's going to potentially be out there. If we open it to everything that's contained under the multi-use, excuse me, yeah, multi-use general zoning, it's a very wide array of potential uses of that property, which I am not in supportive as an owner out there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the table for staff's recommendations. But before I do that, just one more point of clarification. Oh, I'm sorry. I do need to bring Mr. Roll back to the uh podium for rebuttal. But again, one, one little bit of clarification. We're here, the first item, we are considering a general plan change. That is what we generally expect or want an area to develop into. Have to do the general plan change before we can do a zoning change. The zoning change does not require any kind of plan, plan development or anything like that. The zoning either warrants the change or it doesn't. It won't warrant the change if the general plan doesn't speak to it. So, that's kind of the process, that's what we're here for. And I was just pointing that clarification out because we've kind of overlapped a little bit in some of our hearing testimony, if you will. So, Mr. Roll, this is your chance for rebuttal to some of the comments that have been made.
Hey, thank you. Again, it's, it's, I've been here for a while. And Greg on D and E, I apologize, you did not go bankrupt. But everybody that built on your land did go bankrupt. Mr. Giuliani did go bankrupt. Yes, sir, but he, he built the, the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Roll, I'm sorry, you have to address the commission only. Thank you.
And pertinent to some of the comments.
And when I sold parcel I, they were dual homes. They're beautiful, single-family homes, not dual. You did change it. Now granted, they're still residential, I get that, but they're single families.
Mr. Roll, I'm sorry, you have to, you have to address the commission.
So, I look at that and going, hey, I'm looking at all these degrees on who did what, but again, I'm glad it all turned out good. There was a time where everybody was scratching their head. There was bankers holding lots and lots out here that were all upside down. Everybody I knew out there that built a house went, went belly up. And they're all good people. I don't mean to say anything bad about them. It was very tough times. Carl Flouche, if he was here, he was the one uh we bought it from. I loved Carl, great guy. He's gone too, but again, things have changed. The bankers got rid of the lots and there's very, very beautiful homes out there. I don't want to change that. And um if there was a hotel at seventy feet out there with three hundred rooms, no one would like that either, I bet. And a lot of them, the whole top floor was, was uh basically club rooms that people could actually live in them. What was the original drawing? So you guys all understand that. But three hundred rooms, seventy feet tall, which would be overlooking everybody's neighborhood. I can't say I'd like that as a homeowner either. And so, as, as I talk to you guys, just going, I, I'm trying to fit something in here and we, it needs to be a win-win. I want there to be, whether it's an ice cream shop or something along that side, that would be beneficial. A convenience store out there would be really convenient out there, which would really be nice. But again, you know, one step at a time.
Well, but I guess, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When, when, when I had this neighborhood meeting, I was told, Jim, don't do any drawing whatsoever until you get approved. And that's what I was told and that's what I did. The meeting was to let everybody know that I was trying to do a zoning change, not hiding anything. In sixteen, pretty much everybody I talked to, everybody wanted some sort of boat storage. So I thought in parcel A only, since it's on that, that would have been a nice, easy thing. Well, obviously, everybody said, hey, we don't want anything to do with it. If you can help it, hey, it's all good. So I moved on from that. But again, as I'm creeping in eh on this, I obviously have to work with Stuart and Luke to get, get a like-minded. And it's even fire and, you know, I build a lot of different buildings to spec. I do not put up Band-Aids, I put up Cadillacs. That's what I do. And that's why in my clients, they obviously really, really beg me to come into the situations because I overbuild. I do not underbuild. And it's always stamped by an architect. I grew up in a room together when we were at NDSU. He draws all my buildings. And they're not for ten years, fifteen years. They're seventy-five-hundred-year-old builds. State of South Dakota, the state of North Dakota. I do a lot of offices, a lot of different things. I enjoy it, gives me something to do. I'm a widower, I have kids. You gotta have a reason to get up every morning and this is what I'm doing. And I happen to be in Lake Havasu. I've been trying to be patient and do my thing and I love it here. It's a wonderful, wonderful community. And uh that's what, I guess what I'm trying to say. But to say nothing has been changed, a lot has been changed, but it's still been a wonderful thing. I'm glad Greg and his company is doing very well. I'm happy for him. Uh, there's enough bad luck in this world, we don't need more. But I'm also saying very nicely is, is I'm trying to fit into the community, I'm trying to fit into the island and trying just to, and that way if pans on, there's not a management company that quote-unquote answers to me. There's only one guy that makes the decision, that's me. And if somebody's out of line or somebody's in there, they're not going to be there that long, they're causing problems. That's just the way it is. I do it because I enjoy it. I enjoy the camaraderie, I like the building. I like the uh, the things that go along with it. But again, you know, uh, I'm down here and I'm trying to make a very nice thing. My mom and dad were in the Arizona for twenty-five years of their retirement and that's all I'm trying to do is fit in and have it a real win-win for the island as well as a win-win for uh, uh this piece of dirt that we have out here. And it's a beautiful spot and that's all I'm trying to do is fit in.
Thank you, sir.
I have uh.
Mr. Nelson.
One, two, two things. One is that um in the different homeowners' associations, they according to the, the, the maps and the plans that everybody keeps referring to.
Right.
And you've referred to like dual homes or joint homes and stuff like that, yeah. Malibu, Siena Villas, all that stuff. But within those, those uh, that zoning, you can build single-family without having to change anything.
Well, in, in before we did the change, no, you had to follow. If you were in patio homes or dual homes or condos, that's the only thing you could build there, period. Not single-family homes. Greg on his company's D and E was the only person that was supposed to be able to get to do that. But since, and that's where uh, uh your, your attorney and once they sell that lot to the end user, they can turn and do anything they want.
Clarification, not anything that they want.
Excuse me, excuse me, single-family house.
So selling the lot to the final owner, the end user, just has to do with the development agreement. It has nothing to do with the planned development.
Right, or zoning.
Yeah, planned development, which is the zoning, that has, that only pertains to the development agreements. They can't do whatever they want. So, can't do whatever you want just because you bought it.
I mean that you get to build your nice house that you guys have all built.
We understand and we, we, we're, we're trying to help you. Um, I don't think anybody in this room doesn't want that to just stay dirt, you know? So the, the things that you're saying, an ice cream shop, a little general store, you know, those things would be great, and a great accessory to the island. But perhaps, you know, just consulting someone about creating a new uh PD to where you can specify, you know, this is going to be mixed use, this little part. This is going to be, I mean, what you want to do is residential, you know, what you're saying that you want to do is residential, multi-family, have a section of that. So create a new PD that the neighbors and, and this commission can understand. It would be, we don't have enough information to make a responsible decision today. We just, we just don't. That PD would spell out everything that you want to do and put your ideas to where we could pass it and that could be built and everybody's happy. And you could do exactly what you want to do. But a PD is, is the answer to help you, the PD change.
Any other questions of Mr. Roll? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Could I take this opportunity to summarize and try to clarify the whole?
As a zoning administrator? Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You have my permission.
All right. The Planning Commission has two items in front of them. The first, and I'm going to try to put this in layman's terms. I mean, we all realize after the discussion today, there's multiple layers here. General plan, zoning, um base zoning, uh plan development, restrictions, everything. However, in its simplest form, the first decision the Planning Commission has to make is the general plan amendment, which essentially says resort-related, which is primary commercial, that's what it is now. And is it appropriate to change it to resort-related island, which is primarily residential? Yes or no? Second element, or the second um vote that the Planning Commission is going to uh have to determine. Although it's difficult for me to give this individual credit, I think Mr. Gates as well as Mr. Nelson hit the nail on the head. Mr. Gates suggested that we, we shouldn't or we don't need to compare mixed-use neighborhood um with mixed-use general. Basically, what we have to determine is do we, as a community, you and the council ultimately, want to see that? What is within that red line? Essentially, exactly that, um if not so closely related to that, anything other than what is shown on that diagram is going to have to come back to you and the commission for some sort of review. I think we all heard today that a straight-up zoning district, which this is where uh Mr. Nelson's comments came in, basically allows a, a, a long laundry list of uses, some which may be objectionable or not objectionable. And at the end of the day, he is exactly correct. If the council determined that um the mixed-use general district was appropriate, Mr. Roll or any subsequent owner could develop any of those uses, of course, after review, the traditional staff review. Any of those uses allowed in that table. I think what the commission is saying is that um based on the location of that property, the proximity of it to the other residential element and the apparent s- connection, if you will, um to that development, it would be much more palatable on the part of the commission and/or the council to make a decision based on a site plan or, or another PD.
An intended use.
Eh, and correct, intended uses, um which would also commit the developer to um, to that design, essentially. Just something different than what's, what's on the, on the map now, uh but a different design of his choosing. And that is about as simple as I can make it uh in layman's terms for the benefit of the audience as well as the commission.
Any other questions of staff? We are at the table for staff's recommendation.
Staff finds the proposed general plan amendment meets the requirement set forth. Now, we're talking about the general plan amendment for a step. So, the general plan meets this requirement set forth in fourteen oh five oh four M. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of Land Use Action twenty-dash-twenty-two fifty-one, changing the future land use map within the city uh general plan for the eleven-point-four acre parcels from resort-related to resort-related island. Also, keep in mind the commission's recommendation will go to the city council on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Nelson, do you have some comments? I do. I would tend to agree with a lot of the testimony here today. We have some issues out there with regards to uh density, traffic, uh those sorts of things.
I would submit that it's oftentimes, as I'll just kind of recap what Stuart said. It's oftentimes easier to obtain a zoning, a different zoning that doesn't correspond with the general plan when you bring to the table your plan, what you want to do. Right now, they're asking through this application and the successive one for an open-ended zoning where you could do whatever's allowed within that district. And I'm not sure that's appropriate for this particular location. And that's all I have to say. We are still at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners.
Mr. Nelson.
I move to not approve uh, land use action number twenty dash two-two-five-one, changing the future land use designation for the eleven point, point four acre parcels from resort-related to resort-related island.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can I ask you just to amend it real quick before it's even seconded to your recommending denial?
I'm recommending to not.
You're not denying it, but you're recommending denial to the city.
I'm recommending denial of land use action number twenty dash two-two-five-one, changing the future land use designation for the eleven point four acre parcel from resort-related to resort-related island.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Nelson and a second by Mr. Bergen to deny, which is the same as not approving. I'm being funny. Anyway, uh, item number two-zero-two-two-five-one. Any additional discussion by commissioners? All right, let's go ahead and place our votes if there's none. Uh, clarification. A yay vote would be to de- deny. Okay? Okay. It's not saying that we don't want the development. We just need some more clarification. Ms. Gary, now what do we do about the second? Does that render that item moot?
No, it doesn't, because all you're doing is recommending to the city council either approval or denial of the action. So you do need to, I would open up the public hearing on the second item. Um, if you have any further discussion that you would like to have, you may have that. Or if you would like staff to present anything additional with respect to that, um, you certainly may. Um, if you think we've discussed it enough and you just want to open the public hearing really quick and bring it back.
That's what I'm going to do.
Yep.
All right, so we have jointly discussed ID two-zero-two-two-five-one and two-zero-two-two-five-zero. We are now here to talk about two-two-five-zero, and since we've discussed it enough, as Ms. Gary says, we're going to open it up to the public to speak on item number two-two-five-zero, which is a zoning change. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. Mr. Lopez.
Yes, good afternoon or good morning, Louis Lopez on behalf of Shoreline Homeowner Association. I, I respectfully disagree. I think with the denial of the last request, I don't believe a zoning change is appropriate in light of the commission's decision. I just want to add specific issues as to the zoning requests. I do not want to regurgitate the issues that have been done before. The, the primary genesis, if you look at the staff report on page two, paragraph three, as to why they're ultimately recommending the zoning change, is the assumption that the property cannot be developed, that it is somehow impractical, and Mr. Roll has represented that he doesn't intend to develop the property unless the zoning changes are done. Well, Mr. Roll's family, as he, he explained earlier, understands the history of this island, understand all the restrictions on it, understands they purchased this lot and had this lot at the time with the restrictions are. The fact that a developer chooses not to move forward with the, with a plan, even though they financially can and they have the ability to do so, but they choose not to do so for some whatever reason, doesn't justify making a zoning change. So to be really clear, what Mr. Roll is really saying is, I want the zoning change because I don't think I can develop my parcels of property in a cost-efficient, profitable manner as I want to, or make it as profitable as I want to. That's not the same thing as saying he can't develop the property. It's not the same thing that the property can't be developed and consistent with all the requirements on their island. And it's not even saying that he won't sell the property to someone else that was discussed in the last time. So in light of your prior decision and the fact that there is nothing that is absolutely impeding his ability to develop the property, I don't think the zoning change is appropriate. The other issue that I want to talk about is the notice. And it was touched on a little bit earlier as part of issue number one. But the notice in this case was clearly deficient. I've spoke to many homeowners who participated in the citizen review meeting, and it was the same comments that you had before. There was no specificity. Now, I don't know if the reason why Mr. Roll did not provide specificity as to what he wanted to do in the event of getting a zoning change was the advice of council or someone else. But it was communicated to them, I wasn't personally present, so I'm relying on the individuals that attended, that this truly was a preliminary matter. It was never communicated to them, hey, we're having this meeting on the thirteenth. I'm going to give you general sixty thousand foot issues. I'm not going to tell you the specifics. And then six days later, I'm going to file an application with the zoning commission trying to seek a zoning change. That was never communicated to them. And I can tell you, had that message been communicated to the individuals that attended, the number of people here today would be significantly larger. There are a lot of folks on the island. These are second homes. They're outside of the state. They, they just learned about this frankly last Wednesday or Thursday. They didn't really have the opportunity to come down here and express their concerns about these issues. And specifically the concerns, I even heard one homeowner refer to as they felt as they were deceived or misled as to the process and what was going on. So not only do you, not only has the, the assumption for which the zoning change is based upon and the assumption for which the staff is making their recommendation, I don't believe that they, the notice requirement has been fully complied with and you haven't provided an opportunity for all the affected individuals to speak on behalf of it. I would, again, I request that the request be denied. At minimum, if you are contemplating anything, then denial, then delay the vote for another day to allow other individuals to come in and speak on this issue who frankly didn't have the timing or notice to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Chair, may I make a quick clarification?
Ms. Gary.
It is necessary for the commission to make a decision or to provide some sort of recommendation. This is a two-step item. As you know, it comes to you for recommendation and then it goes to the city council. Just because you happen to recommend denial doesn't mean it stops. It moves forward. So theoretically, the first item will go to council and they can decide either way, denial or approval. If they decide approval, then they need, they need your recommendation on this item as well. So it is necessary for you to hear and decide and make a recommendation on this item as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We understand that.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez, you may return. One time.
And, and the reason why I say that is respectfully disagree, because the denial of the first motion and rendering this motion moot, it tells the city council the decision on this issue number two was contingent on decision on issue number one. And so I, I respectfully disagree that you have to affirmatively say yes or no here. I think, and, and I, and in fact, I think because of the way you voted on your recommendation, it actually creates ambiguity with respect to issue number two. And the reason why I say that is the city council that's going to see that the recommendation was not to approve the twenty-two-five-one item, if they get a recommendation here from you saying we're denying their request, a city council member may say, well, did Mr. Nelson deny that request because he believed the issue was moot? Or even if we as a city council disagree with the recommendation and we're approving fifty-one, did Mr. Nelson still say the criteria for the zoning as the five-oh matter wasn't satisfied and I voted no on that issue? So I, I, I disagree because I do think you are creating ambiguity in the process. So if we are going to put the issue up for a recommendation, I do think there needs to be a clarification on the motion as to whether or not you're denying the motion because you believe it's moot in light of your decision on issue number one. Or are you saying irrespective decision number one, I'm still voting no on the zoning change? Because even if issue number one is corrected and is, is granted, I still don't believe the requirements have been met for the zoning changes at issue number two. And I know that sounds complicated, and just like an attorney to, to put everything complicated, and I know I'm getting typically in the legal arena, when you're dealing with decisions by the courts, that's what you do. To eliminate that, that ambiguity. All I'm saying is I respectfully disagree that the motion as presented without any clarification can, will adequately represent your decision, depending on what the basis of your decision is. Because again, you can deny this motion for two reasons. You can say, I agree with Mr. Lopez, the issue is moot. Or you can say, I agree with Mr. Lopez, the criteria for the zoning change hasn't been made. And I do think it's appropriate when you are making recommendations to the city council that the city council understands why you are voting a particular way on this second issue. Because that may have an impact on their decision-making when it goes to the city council.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? I, I'll, I'll get to you. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to close the public testimony. Uh, did you want to come up, Mr. Waylon?
Good morning again. I'm Waylon Gates. I would like to say that this is more.
Pull your microphone down, please.
I'm sorry, this, this item is more specifically the item that I disagree with being recommended to the council because of the changing of the zoning and taking it out of the PD. My personal opinion is that we probably would have been okay to sort of extend an olive branch to Mr. Roll in recommending the previous item that essentially just changes it from more commercial to more residential and not recommending this one, thereby saying, look, if you put together a nice plan, you could bring that back to us and then we would like to see something like that and move forward. As an owner out there, um, that is what I would like to see. But this item for absolute positive, I disagree with one hundred percent, and I ask that you guys do not recommend the council to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public testimony portion. I'm going to call the applicant to the podium, Mr. Roll.
I guess what I'm trying to do is.
Come to the microphone, please.
I guess what I'm trying to clarify for uh, the attorney.
Mr. Roll.
That, that uh, I sent out certified letters on October twenty-third with receipts of everybody that got one. Not the first time, the second time. And uh, in there was a letter and the meeting was November twenty-third, not five days. And everybody got that letter and we did have the meeting. Just clarifying, whether you vote for it or I at least did my part.
Thank you.
That's all I'm trying to point out, that I mailed them October twenty-third. We can blame it on the postman. But hopefully there's no.
I wouldn't get your feelings too hurt about that. We, we get that all the time.
Okay. And so uh, I guess I was trying to do, I was trying to do what I was told and recommended. And that's all I'm trying to get across in lieu of the attorney is doing a nice job. But uh, I was going to make sure that, that I did my, my part as well. And I think there is a two-week or a three-week notice.
If you're asking about, once staff receives a, a rezone or a plan, anything that requires a public notification, we send that notification out as part of our, as part of our process, letting people know of the meeting dates for things that require public notification like rezones, general plan amendments, conditional use permits. And we send those out to the property owners who are required to receive those.
That's what the city does.
If that's the answer to your question.
But the applicant himself has to have a public meeting and he does his own notice on that.
Yes.
And that's what Mr. Roll is speaking to.
Now, as far as the city communicating that, that's not my, that's not in my, my deal.
Everything was done according to Hoyle.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Roll. All right, the public testimony period is closed. Is there, are there, well, let's go to staff's recommendations. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff finds the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in fourteen oh five oh four L. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends, planning commission recommend approval of item number twenty dash twenty-two fifty, amending the Grand Island Estates Plan Development by removing parcels A and C, Lot One, and rezoning the properties from M U N P D to M U N G District. The commission's recommendation will go to city council on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Once again, I'm going to open up the discussion by saying, I feel that this is not uh, that the zoning doesn't merit changing on its own, and therefore I would not be in favor of it. Mr. Nelson, did you have comments?
I just think um, it's kind of dangerous to remove this from the plan development and zone it all, you know, one thing, one, one zoning. I think it needs to be, it's a PD now. It should be, we want to, we want to help the, the owner get something built there. And I think he can do exactly what he wants to do. And I think the neighborhood would probably be in, in favor of it if, if it was a plan development and each particular thing that he wants to do was spelled out.
I would think that this zoning would, would fly through no problem with a plan development.
Yeah, and, and to um, just talking, you know, something about what Mr. Gates said earlier. One of the reasons why we, we just don't have enough information to have passed the first request, um, to extend that olive branch. We, we're not here to be against anybody. But we, we didn't have enough information to do that. That's all my comments.
Too open-ended. Still here for discussion, Commissioners and/or a motion. Either one. Mr. Bergen.
I move for the not denial of ID two-oh-two-two-five-oh.
Excuse me. Uh, is that, is that correct, two-two-five-oh? Yes. We have a motion by Mr. Bergen to deny uh, ID two-zero-two-two-five-zero. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have the motion by Mr. Bergen, a second by Ms. Ballard, to deny ID two-zero-two-two-five-zero. Any further discussion? All right, let's cast our votes. And again, a yay vote approves the denial.
Record passes. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the call to the public. Anybody who wishes to speak to the commission or address the commission on any subject whatsoever can come to the podium and talk to us. We may not respond, but this is your opportunity to do so. Is there anybody that would like to come to the podium and address the commission? We've got two. Mr. Waylon is on his way. For Waylon.
I'm Waylon Gates.
Yeah, Mr. Gates.
I just wanted to touch on something with the, the past item. I know it's already voted on and it's been denied, which um, I'm happy. on and it's been denied, which I'm happy to hear that. The public meeting that was held on behalf of the applicant, he wasn't at that meeting, and so, we weren't really to address any questions with him at that meeting, so it seemed kind of disingenuous of him to make it seem as though he did have this meeting and was very open about what he was trying to do and everything, because that just wasn't the case. Just wanted to make that known.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address the commission? We've got another one coming. Please state your name for the record.
My name's Jackie Dickinson, and I also would like to note the actual certification letters that went out. I'm in the back row of Ciena Villas there, and I'm clearly within the boundaries of which I should have been notified, and both times, I was not notified, I did not get any information, and I actually spoke to Mr. Roll about that the first time and had a conversation with him on the phone, and, like I said, just want to make it clear that I've never received anything, and I clearly should be getting notices. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Roger Banowitz, homeowner on the island, I would like the commission and the city attorney to clarify the process going forward. We just heard denial of two motions, do they still get to go to the city council for consideration? And if there, Mr. Roll wants to re-present for something in the future, how is that done?
We cannot respond to anything that you are requesting, it's up to the attorney.
But I'll talk to you after the meeting, and anybody else who wants to talk about that, we can absolutely talk about that for the meeting, but we can't respond to you, I'm so sorry, do not call the public.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to address the commission in the call to the public? Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. The meetings for February 5th has been canceled, we don't have, we have no items for that meeting date. The room is taken on February 19th, so we won't have a meeting on that day either, so the February 19th commission meeting is canceled. If for some reason there's something very pressing that comes up, we may need to have a special meeting, hopefully, we won't need that, but if we do, we will let you know if there's a special meeting we need to hold. But at this point, the meetings for February 5th and February 19th are not, they're canceled. The next regular scheduled meeting will be for March 4th, if we have items at that point, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming and your professionalism and the way you conducted yourself, we stand adjourned.